Good evening and welcome to the August 8th Mayor Council Work Session. Tonight, we have two items on our agenda. The first is a presentation from Tool Design related to the city's Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments Transportation Land Use Connections Grant Study. And then, we're going to have a presentation from Montgomery County Department of Transportation on the Lake Forest Transit Center study. So, let's start with Tool Design. And Rob Robinson, I'll let you take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Ashman. Good evening, council members. In May of 2015, the city applied for and received a $30,000 transportation land use technical assistance grant from MW COG. The grant requested the funding to provide technical assistance in conducting a first-half-mile, last-half-mile analysis of existing bicycle pedestrian facilities connecting to major transportation stations and two regional activity centers within the city. These are our two MARK stations and the Lake Forest Transit Center. The objectives of the study were threefold. One, to determine how the city could enhance, prioritize, and fund bicycle and pedestrian travel improvements, thus decreasing the need for single occupancy vehicle use, increasing transit mode share, and fostering a climate conducive for development, redevelopment, and revitalization. The second one was to determine how the city can provide more convenient and safer access to transit for low to moderate income households that depend upon public transit for access to employment and other daily needs. And the third was to determine what impediments to bicycle and pedestrian travel exist that may discourage people from accessing the transit services provided at those stations. Working with COG staff, the firm of Tool Design Group, for which I'm very happy, we're selected as the consultant for the project. And here from Tool this evening to begin the presentation is Eli Glazer.
Eli, welcome.
Thank you. And I'm Aleah Anderson. I'm also with Tool Design Group. And I'll kick us off here. Would you mind going to the next slide, please?
Aleah, welcome to you as well.
Thank you so much, Mayor Ashman and members of the council. We really appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight and also to have worked on this exciting project. So, Tool Design Group is a national planning and engineering firm that specializes in active transportation. So, working with cities just like Gaithersburg to help look at the street network and try to make places, make it just as easy and inviting and comfortable to walk as it is to drive, to bike as it is to take transit, and do all those things in a connected way. So, that is what we did here in the city of Gaithersburg on this project. It was a pleasure to be back here, working again. We worked on a bicycle network study for the city several years ago. And so, our team is familiar with the city and already really appreciates all of the assets that you have in Gaithersburg when it comes to transportation and livability. A lot of tight street grid network through much of the downtown area, great sidewalk network. And these are the type of attributes that cities all over the country are striving to replicate. So, we have a good starting point for the study to build on. The project team is shown here. The project manager, Tammy Sufi, one of Tool Design Group's original employees and a pedestrian and bicycle planner with decades of experience. She has, is on leave from Tool Design Group right now, but she led much of the study. Eli Glazer was her right-hand partner on this project and there for every step. Eli's going to lead most of the presentation tonight. And I was the director of the project. And I'm the Mid-Atlantic Director of Planning for Tool Design Group here. So, Eli's going to walk through some of the findings of the study and refer you to the report. I'm not going to cover everything, just the highlights tonight. And then, more than welcome to answer any questions that you may have.
Great.
Thank you, everyone. So, the agenda this evening, we're going to go into project goals a bit. Rob touched on that already. I talked about the scope of work, and then, our study area, observations, and recommendations. And then, we'll take your questions. So, the project goals, Rob touched on here. I would say the overarching goal of this project was to improve the quality of the pedestrian and bicycle environment for everyone, but for transit users specifically. In addition to these project goals, the plan furthers the city's master plan vision by encouraging individual health and wellness and reinforcing the commitment to sustainable practices that promote social equity, environmental health, and economic prosperity. The three study areas we looked at are the half-mile walk sheds around the Metropolitan Grove Station, the Old Town Gaithersburg MARK station, and the Lake Forest Transit Center, as Rob mentioned. And to get, to kick off the process of our scope of work, we did some plan review, among other documents. We looked at the Gaithersburg Master Plan, the Montgomery Village Master Plan, the draft Lake Forest Transit Center feasibility study, some MARK meeting minutes, and other documents related to transit service. And that really gave us a great foundation to go into our fieldwork. In mid-March, the TDG team did several rounds of fieldwork, looking at each station individually, and then, some specific issues in the Old Town area on Diamond and Summit, East Diamond and South Summit. And based on that fieldwork and additional sort of remote review using Google Maps and other sources, we recommend, or we identified recommendations. And then, we sort of put them into short, medium, and long term. So, less than two years, between two and five years, and greater than five years time horizon, based on the feasibility, cost, right-of-way availability, different metrics like that. And I think it's important at this point to note that these recommendations are a guidance for city policy. It's not really a to-do list, or a checklist, or all of these things don't have to be done. But it should help inform your CIP discussions and other sort of capital planning discussions moving forward. And we definitely recognize that for many of the recommendations, collaboration with MCDOT, SHA, and private landowners will be necessary. So, we developed these recommendations, and then, we created cost estimates, which I'll get into a little bit later. So, through our analysis, in addition to the specific station area recommendations, we developed a few high-level general recommendations applicable to all station areas. These are with bicycle parking. One of the main recommendations is that all stations should have high-quality, short- and long-term bicycle parking. That means bike parking that is secure and protected from the elements. So, if I'm a transit user and I want to use a bicycle, I should know that after two hours, my bicycle's still there, and after eight hours, my bicycle's still there, and it's dry, and it's safe. So, these facilities are things like bike lockers or covered bike racks. And I think that's a really important sort of last mile amenity for transit users is knowing that they have safe bike parking. The city, as use of bike parking grows in the city, the city should actively manage its bike parking. It should know how much it has, where it has it, and what the demand is, so it can install more as demand rises. And then, also, the city should market its available bike parking to marked riders and potential marked riders, people who wouldn't have thought to use MARK, they don't want to drive, but it's kind of hard to get to the station, but maybe they'll bike to the station and take transit that way. More information about bike parking, sort of bike parking standards and different designs of bike parking can be found in the study document. The next topic is street design. Discussions we had suggest that the city should consider tightening curb radii where practical and marking crosswalks where demand for crossing exists. Tightening curb radii means making street corners less rounded and more triangular. And these measures together help improve pedestrian safety and convenience by better defining pedestrian space and also shortening crossing distances to reduce exposure time for pedestrians, to limit the time there in the vehicular right-of-way. And the last thing is Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. Over time, we recommend all of the city-maintained facilities should be made compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act. The city can do this through their pavement management program or some other transition plan. I think a lot of the sidewalks that we saw were compliant, but there are a few areas that could be brought up to compliance. So, those are our general recommendations. Next, what I'm going to do is do a little bit of a deeper dive into the specific station areas, highlight the story of each station. There's like a main idea of each station. Discuss some of the existing station conditions at each place, and then, touch on a few quick implementation ideas and a longer-term sort of big idea or two. The first station is the Old Town Gaithersburg Station. This is an area that the city has significant control over. Many of the recommendations the city can undertake on its own. And though the area is built out, redevelopment will present a lot of opportunities to improve the pedestrian realm. I think we've seen that with the Gaithersburg Station apartments. The streetscape in front of that apartment building is great. It's, I've taken, I took a lot of pictures of it during our fieldwork, and we've actually used them in other plan documents and other sort of, as an example of what to do. It's pretty nice. So, good job, all of you.
Thank you. We'll take the grapes.
Good. Existing conditions beyond that, a generally well-connected sidewalk network with, as Aleah mentioned, there are some gaps and some narrow non-ADA compliant areas. On East Diamond, there are a few gaps by the East Diamond Service Center. And then, South Summit at Wells, on the west side, the sidewalk is narrow and not ADA compliant. And then, the corner of South Summit and East Diamond, which is shown at number one here and the, on the screen, is very narrow. I actually almost got hit at this location by a vehicle because they're, just the site distances are so minimal due to the building face. So, these are some of the things we observed when it comes to the sidewalk network. Additionally, at Wells and South Summit, there's a potentially confusing intersection. It's shown at number two. There's a full traffic signal, but also what's called a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, which gives pedestrians conflicting information about whether or not to cross the street. So, we have some recommendations in the report about that. And then, there's also a clear need for increased pedestrian connectivity. If you look at number three on this slide, the parking garage, the South Summit, there's this gravel path. I'm sure you've all seen it. I think there's a lot of demand there for a formalized facility, either paved or some sort of facility that pedestrians can use. And people that are less abled can use wheelchairs and that sort of thing. And then, also, east of Melvin Street, connecting Teachers Way and East Diamond Avenue, there are some desire lines. And there are a few other places around the city that pedestrians clearly want to travel, but have created paths of their own. And then, number four, hidden bike parking. There's great, great, these are really great bike lockers. It's like 12 bike parking spaces hidden under the parking garage without any signage, without, it's not totally clear how you use them or who you talk to to use them. So, we have recommendations about that. It's a great amenity, and I think more people should know about it.
Do they belong to the city? Are those ours?
We lease them.
Okay.
Yeah, there's, we found some information on the website after the fact, but I think sort of in line with publicizing the bike parking, that's sort of part of it.
Okay.
So, as I mentioned, our recommendations are divided into quick implementation and big ideas. You can see a full map of our recommendations on page 17 of the report. So, quick implementation, first, move the existing bicycle parking that we just discussed to parking spaces on Wells Avenue. Right across from the station, there's on-street parking that, at least when we were there, seemed underutilized. And a few of those spaces could be replaced with 12 bike parking spaces that would be very convenient for transit users to access. In addition to that, we recommend adding five covered U-shaped bike racks, which would be 10 bike parking spaces. It's more of a short-term bike parking option compared to the lockers, which are a long-term option. And then, the second quick implementation option is to pave that desire line from the parking garage to South Summit. I think you'd get a lot of compliments on it. It's a, I think a lot of people, that's their first, one of their first impressions of access, like exploring the downtown and the city. And that would be, it'd be a nice thing to have a smooth right-of-way. And then, big picture, we would like, we recommend a connection between the Old Town MARK station and the Washington Grove MARK station as a first step to a bigger connection to the Shady Grove Metro and the rest of the regional trail network. In our doc, in this document, we have recommended it as a trail on the south side of the railroad right-of-way. It doesn't have to be that. It can be a facility on the north side. It can be an on-street facility. There, I think, for their study, should choose the right facility type. But the main idea is these two stations can be the first connection in a larger regional trail that connects this community to other communities and to other transit options. The next station is Metropolitan Grove. The big idea here is that this area is in such a process of re-imagination and redevelopment. The biotech offices that are there will be reconfigured, and they're growing, and there's new mixed-use development on the horizon, and the Watkins Mill interchange may actually happen in the near future, which is great. Improving pedestrian mobility in this area is largely dependent on successfully channeling this development and ensuring pedestrian-friendly urban design results from that. In the interim, however, improvements can be made that enhance the quality of the pedestrian and bicycle experience. Some things we noticed, more so than in downtown, as you might expect, stationary land uses are more disconnected and independent. It's sort of hard to get between different parcels without going onto major streets like Clopper Road, which makes pedestrian access difficult. Buildings are set back from the street behind parking, so you're not really, as a pedestrian, it's not very welcoming. Also, there are ADA issues that affect transit access. The Parklands development is really great, a good, really good example of pedestrianism. And there's really wide sidewalks and great trees and good ADA accommodations until you get to the trail that connects to the MARK station. And on number two, you can see it in the slide, there's no curb ramp. So, there's this great trail, great path, but that like one last thing that's needed is not there, which is unfortunate. Similarly, at Clopper Road and Watkins Mill, there is a curb ramp, but the slope is difficult for wheelchair users to access the intersection safely, which can limit transit access. In addition, with, as with in some other areas we noted, there's insecure and, or unsecure and uncovered station bicycle parking at this location.
Did you do any census at all when you, during the study, in terms of actual number of bikes parked at these facilities during the day?
We did not. We went, we didn't come back to the stations enough times to do that. But I think from, we didn't know how many state, how many bikes were parked in the bike lockers in the Old Town Station. But when we were at the Lake Forest Station, one bike was locked to the bike rack, which is totally unscientific, but one bike was locked across the bike rack. You'll see it in the picture. And then, this station had zero bikes parked. And I think one of the reasons for that is that I personally, I bike to work. I wouldn't, I would not leave my bike here for eight hours or nine hours unattended.
If there was a locker, you would?
If there's a locker or, yeah, yeah, I think I totally would.
Yeah.
If I had to use this. But thank you for your question. Page 27 has a full map of the recommendations for the station. Quick implementation, build that curb ramp to connect the Parklands development to the MARK path. It would be the last thing needed to connect all of those residents to the MARK station. And then, reconstruct the northeast curb ramp at Watkins Mill and Clopper Road to be ADA compliant. And then, this is actually, it's pretty cool. There's a path between two parking lots off of Watkins Mill Road that just sort of stops in the middle of the two parking lots. You can see it, it's MG1. If we could continue that path to Metropolitan Court, we would, you would create a mid-block connection between Clopper Road and the railroad right-of-way that would cut pedestrian walk time by a lot. It would really shorten commute time for people who are either using MARK as their first, they're connecting first mile to MARK or last mile to their jobs from MARK. I think it's definitely on private property, so something would have to be worked out. But it is, it's really one of those interim connections before the redevelopment that could change block size and that sort of thing, that would really improve access for pedestrians and bicyclists. And then, install more high-security, high-quality bicycle, stationary bicycle parking. And then, big picture, new street grid through redevelopment. On the left is a rough schematic of the existing street grid, and on the right is the potential street grid in pink. There's the potential to create small block sizes, different urban design that encourages walking and biking. You can improve local access, improve internal circulation, take traffic off of Clopper Road and Watkins Mill, because those are very congested roads, and they're going to get more congested. So, if people want to make local trips, allow them to use local roads. People, pedestrians and bicyclists are more comfortable on these quieter, local streets rather than Clopper Road. Increasing intersection density would allow more routing options for all road users. Gives you different ways to get to the same place. And then, another big idea is to develop a trail network, which is shown in light green along the Long Draft Branch, to connect residential communities to the south of the station area. Connect, it would connect communities along Rabbit Road and Diamond Drive more directly to the station area. It's, it's really rough in here, in this graphic, but these areas, just due to the nature of the street grid and topography and just the environmental conditions, have a very circuitous route on foot or by bike or even by car to the MARK station. So, these would be really great active transportation shortcuts to get to the transit station. The big, the next station is Lake Forest Transit Center. The big idea here is that so much of the task of improving bicycle pedestrian mobility in this area depends on close cooperation and collaboration with private landowners, with Montgomery County, and with MCDOT, and RideOn, and everyone. There's a tremendous potential here to retrofit traditional automotive suburbia into a walkable, bikable place in the short term and in the medium term. And I think it's really important to note that this transit station has more boardings and alightings than the other stations we looked at combined. It's about 3,500 compared to 500 or 600. And it's constant. We were there at noon. I think we came back at a different, a different day at like 3:00. People are boarding, people are alighting, people are walking to their jobs at the mall or at the different retail establishments. It's just, it's a really a hotbed of activity, just all day long, which I think is a great opportunity to sort of make that a better environment. What we noticed, all, all streets has, all the streets we looked at had sidewalks, but on Lost Knife, Montgomery Village, and Oden Hall, there were limited places to safely cross the street. There were significant amounts of crossing between MARK crosswalks when we went out for our field visits, which you can see in the picture number one. This is, it's dangerous to do that, but it also reflects a real need on behalf of the pedestrians not to be diverted out of their way. In many cases, the distance between, between crosswalks is 1,500 feet, except like 1,500 feet is like three or four blocks. Like, it's a significant diversion. And I feel like every time we looked up at the street, people were crossing in between crosswalks. So, that's something to think about. I don't think that's anything that can be solved in the near term. I think it's going to be a product of new street design and a new street network. The next thing is that-
The one you, the one you show actually is, is crossing Lost Knife.
Yes.
Which we, that would, I mean, yeah, you're absolutely correct. We'd have to work with other jurisdictions on that.
Yeah. I think that's why, yeah, this station is sort of on the, on the edge of your jurisdiction. And so much of it is this large private development and then, your county counterparts.
Yeah.
So, I think it can be done.
Oh, I, yeah, it could.
No, you know, it reflects planning for suburbia designed for cars, not for pedestrians.
And I think this plan, we're going to give you some good ideas to-
Yes.
The next thing, which is actually really great, is there's landscape medians and curbside landscape buffers, which at first, you might be like, why is that great? But that's great because it allows you to reconfigure the street environment without necessarily touching travel lanes, if you'd like to. Or you might have to close them for a short time, but they, you wouldn't lose any travel lanes after construction. So, it's exciting that there's right-of-way here to do exciting things. And then, the last thing that we noticed is, again, unsecure and uncovered station bike parking. So, this is the picture, this is the one bike we saw parked in the entire time. And it's, I'm not sure if you ever used one of these wave racks before, but that's not the right way to lock it up. But it's probably the most secure way, so.
Did you take a look at the Montgomery Village sector?
Yes.
And what are they planning?
We will get into that.
Okay. Outstanding.
Recommendations, the full suite are on page 38. And then, in the short term, and I say short term kind of loosely in this area because I think it's more like, less long-term, just based on all the collaboration that has to occur. In the short term, the main, one of the big things is constructing a pedestrian median refuge at Oden Hall and Lost Knife on the north end crossing. We measured it, it's about 140 feet across, which is a lot for an able-bodied person to cross in one pedestrian phase, but then, taking into account the retirement community across the street and transit users who might not be in the best shape. It's tough to cross in one go, so having a space for them to rest and wait in other phase would be really helpful. And then, the other thing is install station bicycle parking. The picture LF21 is an example of a individual long-term bicycle parking solution. It's called a bicycle lid. It's essentially a lid that you put over your bike, and then, you can lock it at the bottom, and it's totally secure and protected from the elements. And that's one of the, if the Old Town bicycle lockers are like a deluxe situation, a deluxe bicycle parking option, this is a more affordable one. So, just something to think about. And the big picture is a separated bike lane network in this community. Through our work, we've come to realize that novice and intermediate bicyclists are not comfortable sharing the road with many cars or trucks, whether they're in bike lanes or otherwise. The wide right-of-way availability in this area affords an exciting opportunity to add world-class separated bike facilities without removing travel lanes. These separated bike lanes, as they're called, are found across the world and a bit closer to home in Washington DC and in Montgomery, in parts of Montgomery County. A separated bike lane, for those who are unaware, is any bike lane separated from traffic by a vertical element. It could be parked cars, it could be planters, it could be a curb, it could be on the same level as the sidewalk, that sort of thing. And these facilities really entice novice and intermediate bicyclists to use a bike for short trips, for local trips, to the extent that it could potentially replace local car trips in these communities. And the great thing is that you can see this cross-section here. This is actually from the Montgomery Village Master Plan. There's already a plan that has a separated bike lane on Lost Knife. And what we would propose is to build on this plan, build on this cross-section and create a network of separated bike lanes in this area. So, Oden Hall, Montgomery Village, Russell, there's really a great opportunity here to create this network. I think without, I think a lane in isolation is going to be underused. I think you need to give people places to go, places, you have to connect residences and transit and destinations. And I think of all of our recommendations, I am most excited about this one. So, so I think it's, I think you really have an opportunity through collaboration with local stakeholders to do something that no one else has done in this country, which is to retrofit a more suburban environment with protected bike facilities like this. So, I'm jazzed about it.
That really hasn't been done anywhere?
Well, it's, it's actually in the process of being done very close to home here in Montgomery County. So, the, there's separated bike lanes being added in downtown Silver Spring. The Rock Spring Park area is being redesigned with separated bike lanes in the area. So, it's actually, better way to put it, is probably, it's in progress in lots of places around the country. So, this would be an opportunity to sort of get on board with that movement and also potentially lead it and get, get some networks put in, in a, in a leadership way.
Yeah, I think the network is the key thing, and sort of taking advantage of what's happening in the Lake Forest Mall area, whatever that may be, and using that and leveraging that to create this arterial bike network.
Yeah. There is actually, there is another street, as Ryan just brought up, that we're, we're looking to do this.
Yeah, really close to home, Quince Orchard Boulevard area, so.
Great.
There's a separated bike lane plan already.
Yeah.
Excellent.
We're correcting that right on.
Not a far-fetched idea.
Okay. Awesome. That's great to hear. So, the last thing, cost estimates. Planning-level cost estimates were developed for all of our specific recommendations. There are over 60 recommendations. I think it's really important to note that these are rough, order of magnitude cost estimates. They included landscaping costs, they included drainage, maintenance of traffic, and that sort of thing, but all at a very high level, and any, I think, order of magnitude is the best way to put it. I think, as you move ahead with one or maybe all of these recommendations, it would be great to get more, as design progresses, to, you know, better, a better idea of cost. And then, it's also important to note that many of the recommendations, especially in Old Town, are totally within your right-of-way and are relatively affordable. So if you wanted to do quick projects, if you have the budget for that this year, next year, we can make, you can make some real changes to the pedestrian and bicycle environment in the very short term. So, with that, we'll take questions.
Great. Thank you, guys. Great presentation, really appreciate the, the very common sense ideas that you, that you came up with. You know, I'm, I'm definitely, I think that in terms of the, the grant that we applied for and, and putting it toward this, I, I really appreciate the work products. So, I, it's a lot of food for thought, and I think I'm, I'll be interested to see what, what the council says, and, and how we direct staff to move forward, but I, I certainly think there's a lot of, there's a lot of gold here to mine, so, would like to be next.
Yeah, well, I, I just wanted to kind of revisit what you said, and I, let me first echo what the mayor said about it being a great presentation, and thank you for all the good suggestions, particularly the fact that many of the suggestions, hopefully, won't be that expensive to implement. That's, we really appreciate that. But, you know, you talked about a number of these suggestions, being in the city right, right-of-way, and being within our authority to implement, should we decide to go forward. I'm just wondering, you know, no, no consultant's report is gonna be able to accommodate or think about every possible issue that's gonna affect our ability to do all these things. But, for example, you know, when you were looking at the, the Gaithersburg Old Town Station, and talking about ways that we might be able to change curb ramps here, or get rid of conflicting pedestrian signals, I mean, for example, we don't control traffic signalization, so things like that would be out of our control. In some cases, roads that may appear to be local roads are actually state or county roads, and maybe this is more of a question for Rob, but i- in working together with city staff and preparing this, did you take some of those things into consideration in order to be able to say, look, yes, technically, it's in the city right-of-way, but there are other factors at play here that make this an, an issue, that we can't implement this particular recommendation without some inter-jurisdictional work, for example?
Given, given the time of the presentation, obviously, I wasn't touched on, but working with them, we wanted to make sure that was made very clear in the study. I mean, a lot of this, the advantage was having outside eyes look at something and just identify possibilities, but throughout, it was acknowledged that some of these, as Eli and Aleah had mentioned, you know, we're gonna have to work with private property owners, possibly for some. Working with our friends here at MCDOT, working with SHA, it's just, the real advantage was to have a professional team come in with their fresh eyes and be able to identify stuff, to at least help staff at this point, even begin to think about where should we come before you to make suggestions on who we should partner with, who we should advocate to, or what can we do ourselves.
Okay. And then, for both the Old Town Station, really for all three of the, the stations that you looked at, I assume you all looked at, you know, potential future uses for master planning aspects, you know? For example, if the mall were to get completely redeveloped, you know, would the bike path that you all proposed necessarily be the best way to go, depending on what the reuse of that property is? I mean, it's sort of a chicken and egg problem, right? Maybe you build the path, and it attracts a better prospect for redevelopment of the site, or maybe you redevelop the site, and then it informs how you're going to redesign a bike path. And then, you know, thinking of that, and then also thinking of the Fisherman's Site near the Gaithersburg Station as well, which is not, you know, quite as big a deal as a potential redevelopment of the mall, but same question.
Just to start, before I turn it over to Eli, another thing that was made clear in the study is with their recommendations, which again, as staff, we were very happy with, it was acknowledged that, a- as Eli mentioned at the beginning, this isn't a punch list. In fact, some of the recommendations blatantly conflict with other recommendations. It's, it's an idea of what do you choose, and some of it has a temporal aspect.
Sure.
And we did think a lot about redevelopment, and try to talk with staff and do our homework to figure out what the potential redevelopment opportunities in these areas were, but one thing that is sort of fundamental to our approach to street design associated with redevelopment, is that the chicken or the egg question isn't as unclear to us. Streets set the tone for the type of place that you're in. It's, it's your first impression when you enter into a new area, and so, the, there's a lot of opportunities in this, or a lot of examples in this region of major redevelopment, where the building design, and the building footprint, and the development led the urban form, and those are not particularly inviting, walkable, connected places. And there's a lot of other examples where truly the street design, the network, the grid size, and then the cross-sections led the design of that, of the place, and White Flint is the most obvious example of that, where that was the first step in, in that, in the, the master planning process, was coming up with that, the street network, and then coming up with some cross-sections, so that could set the tone for the type of place that you are. So we would really recommend that you think about your redevelopment opportunities that way too. Not that if you build a, a side path now, then it makes it slightly more bikable, and maybe that will influence the type or the timing of a redevelopment opportunity that comes in, but you get that plan in place, so that your intention is clear, that that's the type of place you intend to create there.
Thank you.
I'll also say that, in addition to these specific recommendations, we also looked at redevelopment, and sort of created some general guidelines for, if this were to redevelop, how would we want the streets to be, how would we want the built environment to look? And not in like, an economic development way, or so much a costed-out way, but just like, how it would be best for pedestrians and bicyclists. So, we, yeah, we don't, we don't know what tomorrow brings, but we can shape it with our street design.
Well, you know, it's a good idea to kind of look at the whole geometry of a redevelopment project, and certainly, that's, in some ways, that, some of that's been proposed already, and looking at redevelopment of Lake Forest, where we could actually have a different street grid than, than just a circular pattern. So I'm a little surprised you didn't suggest that, but you suggested it for the Metropolitan Grove.
It's, it's in the report.
It's in the report.
Yeah. I mean, in terms of the slides that were shown to the public. So, I guess, so, you know, these are all some really good ideas. I think that there's some real opportunities, things that we could pursue right-of-way, and then things that we could kind of think about conceptually. I think one of the things that I was hoping to see, especially for the Metropolitan Grove, Mark Station was actually a last mile instead of a last half-mile, because of the density, residential density in that mile radius, and also the, the proximity in that mile radius to major employers, both on First Field, and Watkins Mill, and NIST, and Bureau Drive. So, what we have here is a, a number of proposals for connectivity within this half-mile radius for all of these plans, which is fine. The question is, what do we connect them to? And I think that's what we really need to have a, a harder look at. So, I know that staff has been working on that, we've all, also talked about it, but I think that's one of the things, we, a- as you said, Eli, we don't wanna just have a isolated bike lane, and then not have it connected to anything, that, that doesn't do anybody any good. So I think what we have to do is, is think about that, and how that, that overlays on a, on a larger plan. So, I think the idea is about installing bike lockers, and, I mean, we've also talked about a couple of these, all three of these locations as being a, a site for a bike-share station as well, so you don't have to worry about people bringing their own bikes, they, you know, if they're getting off the train or getting off a bus, they can, they can hop on a bike to go to another location. So, it would be good to incorporate that into this, this overall perspective as well. So, just, it's, it's good to have this plan here. But, had you thought about that, in terms of the Mark Station and Metropolitan Grove, about extending that, that radius farther? I know that wasn't in the-
We did, we did what our first request, unfortunately, it was COG who cut our $60,000 one-mile request to a $30,000 half-mile request.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd love to look at the broader area, and I think that, you know, it's a, it's a just practicality of scoping and a grant here, that we had to scale back, but many of the recommendations relevant to that station are corridor-based, and so, they would require, their planning-level recommendations at this point, they would require a design analysis as a next step, and so that would be the time to expand the scope, because an only, on-street bicycle lane recommendation, you would wanna look beyond just this half-mile anyway, as you were moving that project forward. And the, the point recommendations as well, things like curb ramp improvements, could go out and just do the few that we have identified specifically, but that same issue exists along those corridors in a broader scale. So hopefully, although we did need to scale our scope back in this effort, the recommendations actually can, are, are pretty applicable, I think, to the, the full connection in most instances. Of course, there's some specific, very site-specific things outside of this zone that we won't have caught.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's really all I have.
Rob?
I just wanna say thank you. What I like about this is that it puts us in the right mindset, and just looking through your specific recommendations, a, a lot of them do take coordination with private entities, with state entities, with county entities and whatnot, and, and having this, and being able to look at this allows us to plan for that. So, that's why I asked you about the Montgomery Village Sector Plan, 'cause I looked at that, and I looked at the bike networks that are in that plan. The question that I kind of was scratching my head with in that plan was, they stopped at our border, and there was no real coordination. So a step that we actually take, and I see Joe Allen out there, he's our Transportation Committee Chair, we, we met with the, the county folks, and we met with Rockville, to talk about interconnectivity throughout the region, which I think is great, and, and this, I think, oh, oh, some of the stuff here really plays into what we're doing. So we funded another study, where we're looking at the 10 highest priority connectors or gaps in, in our, in our bicycle network. And so the information that's here, I think, will help the Transportation Committee as well, in, in kind of figuring out how we can, we can bring better walkability, better livability, better connectability to our city. But, I, I enjoyed the presentation.
Thank you.
So now, I'm gonna ask if anybody from the public would like to speak on this topic. Are we, do we have a portable mic, or, or?
Yeah, we have both.
Well, Joe, why don't you come up to the podium?
I'm Joe Allen, 641B Main Street, and I'm a resident and transit user, so this is very relevant, but of course, I as well founded Bike Gaithersburg, as well as on the WABA Action Committee for Montgomery County, McBagg, and the Transportation Committee Chair for the City of Gaithersburg. And so, this study is very relevant, I was very excited to see COG fund it. As it was said, it's not just about the half-mile, it is usually here, about the last mile or so. Many of the connections are within a mile within the city, so it'll be great, as we overlay this with the bikeway gap study that Rob mentioned, we actually focused purposely not on the areas where COG was, to look at the 10 gaps outside of that, and putting the two together will actually cover most of the city. I'm really pleased to see the high-quality facilities mentioned in here. When we worked on the 2007, you know, implementation of that, it was mostly about sharrows, and really setting up the network and where it might be, and so to see this come now into 2016, and how far it's come, and recommending highly separated facilities and whatnot, I think is great. While it's a total of $3.6 million for the bikeways network in total, just the ones around Old Town are about just under $1 million, and I think that's a great way to start. It actually extends a regional trail network from Rock Creek, I think it would get a lot of use, and does require some coordination with the county and other folks, but I think that's an area where engaging the community first, and seeing how that really lends itself to getting to Shady Grove, and then to Lake Needwood and beyond. I'm also a runner as well, it'd be great to be able to start in Old Town and run all the way down, and get my miles in. As I said, I'd encourage you to reach out to the Transportation Committee and the community as one of the first next steps. I know when we took on Quince Orchard Boulevard and talked about that, I went out to the community, a lot of folks are looking and interested in this, but they wanna learn more about it before it disappears, and study plans, or somebody announces that they're gonna put a trail behind their property or building, or in front of it on, on the road, and so I think we should engage folks early on in that. I also think we should look at pilots. Pilots would be great in the city to look at, maybe not necessarily starting, a lot of these are high-grade facilities and trails, I, I think that's great. A lot of cities take a one-year pilot and say, well, it could be fitted in the existing right-of-way, it might not be perfect, it'll establish that usability and connection, and so I think, again, East Diamond, or Teachers Way, or places like that would be a great place to start. I don't wanna forget, you know, a lot of this talked about short-term things, like pedestrian connections, and wanting to connect people, and I think that is something that we should really look to. The street grid is important, and we should look at Lake Forest in particular, as well as Metropolitan Grove, as redevelopment occurs, to create that street grid. Prospectively, I worked a lot in the White Flint and the first protected bike lane, that was a part of really pushing the developers to do the right thing and set aside the right-of-way. And again, bike parking and bike share, I think, would be a great complement to this, and we should also look at that, so that they meet at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers this evening, on this topic? Okay. Well, we thank you guys for the presentation. Tony?
Mm-hmm.
How should we proceed with next steps? What do we, what do we think?
Well, I mean, any, any capital project would go through the capital budgeting process.
So, so first, we would have our planning staff sort of evaluate all of the suggestions and, and perhaps work with our, our Transportation Committee, and, and come with some options, recommendations.
Some prioritization is gonna be required.
Right.
I, who have asked about census of these users. Obviously, when you're, when you're holding this up against other projects that, that may have more users, you know, those are value judgments you guys will have to make. I mean, then also, you know, the, the level of difficulty, I mean, a lot, I'm just going through the Old Town list, and a lot of this is not our property.
Yeah.
And CSX is famously reluctant to participate in some of these things, so some of them may be longer-term than, than is in the matrix, but, and some of them may surprise us, so we'll just have to kind of go through it, block by block.
Well, the, I mean, the idea that Joe mentioned of a pilot project, for example, you know, I mean, when I hear pilot project, then what I'm envisioning is, you know, the temporary laying down of paint, basically, on a roadway, and saying, this is what it might look like if we actually built a facility here, take a couple months and get used to it. I mean, would, would that be something that would have to go into a capital projects budget, or something we could do in a different way, if we wanted to do something like that?
It, again, depends on the level of expense, and frankly, the level of, of safety risk.
Okay.
Which I'm not really qualified to talk about. I mean, it's, I mean, I know we, we heard a presentation about that at, at MML, I believe, you know, kind of temporary, those were kind of rogue projects, but something-
Yeah, these would be, these would be approved by the city, these would not be rogue projects.
But, again, I mean, our, our insurers would be involved, and obviously, engineering, and people like that.
Well, I mean, just speaking for myself, I'd be interested to learn more about how that would work, if we were to wanna do a pilot.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your work. Next, we are going to move to our presentation from Montgomery County.
Yes, please.
Yes, so this is our natural transition. We ended that one with Lake Forest Transit Center, we're moving into Lake Forest Transit Center.
Okay.
In 2015, the Montgomery County Department of Transportation completed a feasibility study for the expansion of the existing Lake Forest Transit Center. The report summarized existing conditions, estimated peak period ridership projections, and analyzed the bus bays and number of park-and-ride spaces needed. The transit ridership needs and recommendations were projected to horizon year 2020 in the short term, and 2040 in the long term. Again, as we just discussed with this last one, the study recognizes that any of the recommended improvements to the Lake Forest Transit Center are gonna require the coordination and, and the assistance of the City of Gaithersburg, and potentially, the owners of Lake Forest Mall, the various owners of Lake Forest Mall. This evening, the entire study team is here to present their study, and to begin, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Bruce Johnston, Chief of Division of Transportation Engineering for Montgomery County Department of Transportation.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor Ashman, members of the city council, thank you for the time to present us to you this evening.
Welcome all of you.
Yeah, thank you. Again, I'm Bruce Johnston, Chief of the Division of Transportation Engineering, Montgomery County Department of Transportation. With us this evening are Ms. Catherine Matthews, the County Regional Services Director, Rebecca Park, who heads our planning group, Mr. Phil McLaughlin, who is here- With us this evening are Ms. Catherine Matthews, the County Regional Services Director, Rebecca Park, who heads our planning group, Mr. Phil McLaughlin, who is here now, thank you for coming, and Ms. Pam Destino and Ms. Kelsey Crest from our consultants Whitman, Reckert and Associates. You heard in the last presentation how busy this transit center is, which kind of tends to justify what we're going to present to you tonight. We're going to present some proposed improvements for the Lake Forest Transit Center that will involve some reconstruction of Lost Knife Road and Odin Hall Avenue adjacent to the Lake Forest Mall. It's been very successful because of the population, employment, and redevelopment in the up-county area. And to better serve the citizens within Montgomery County, in February of 2013, Montgomery DOT initiated this feasibility study for the expansion of the existing Lake Forest Transit Center to evaluate the need for improvements in that area. We identified the current operations deficiencies and some safety issues with the transit center and explored both short-term and long-term solutions for resolving those issues and meeting the demands for future growth in ridership. So now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Destino to walk us through the presentation and we'll be available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for having us. So I just wanted to briefly give you an introduction to our project and where we are right now and where we're going. So as you all are aware, the Lake Forest Transit Center is next to the Lake Forest Mall north of here, along Lost Knife Road at the corner of Odin Hall and Lost Knife. This transit center is served by seven ride-on routes and two Wamata routes. As Bruce alluded to, the project began in early 2013 as a study to look at the, how we could expand the center. There were safety and operational deficiencies and they, ride-on division of transit wanted us to look at how we could expand the center because there's only two bus bays and it's, it's not meeting needs. So the improvements we recommended for a short term in 2020 and a long term in 2040. As I said, the existing conditions, there's seven ride-on routes, these include both pass-through and destination routes, so meaning they originate at the site. There are two Wamata Express routes and there are two bus bays however, along Lost Knife Road however regularly operates as four, meaning that they overhang along Lost Knife Road, prevent having some safety concerns with vehicular traffic as well as pedestrian traffic. At this site, the buses only can access it from one direction along Lost Knife, this is from going south. So that presents concerns when you're planning your route, you can only have them come to the site from one way and you can only have them leave from the site from one way. There's also a very large shelter at this station and a taxi stand as well as a kiss-and-ride within the parking lot of the mall. There is no parking, there's no operator restroom facility, which presents challenges for the buses that are layover-ing at the site. So in terms of operational deficiencies, as I said, buses queue along Lost Knife Road, at times double stacking, causing traffic problems and unsafe boarding locations for customers. There's no layover space at this center. The routes that need to stop there and wait until the route begins again, so the ones that originate there and end there, there's nowhere for them to rest, so they continually rest in the mall's parking lot. There is also, since there's not enough bus bays, there's delays in a bus that just wants to pass through the site, they have nowhere to stop, they have to wait. And so that presents operational concerns because you have late buses or customers not knowing where they're going, which, and since the buses, there's only two bus bays, they don't have, there's seven routes, there's obviously not designated bus bays for each route, which makes it problems for customers to find their bus. Safety concerns, as I mentioned, there's obviously vehicular conflicts with the buses leaving and entering the site. There's a mid-block pedestrian crossing in like the middle of the transit center, which is not very safe. You know, buses block its view, can't see the cars coming down Lost Knife, can't see around the bus to see the pedestrian. There's lack of space for a taxi queue, there is room for a taxi queue, but it's in, it doesn't meet the needs of how many taxis need to queue there and pick up passengers. It's not very good wayfinding for customers, so sometimes there's confusion. And then, as I mentioned, there's no restroom facilities for bus operators, so the ones that originate and terminate there, bus drivers just have to make do. So the study task, what do we do? So obviously, we first identified the safety and concerns and operational deficiencies. We looked at what the growth would be using the COG rate and we conducted a ridership survey in 2013 to determine how people were accessing the site and where they were going. Unfortunately, at this site, this project was part of a larger project, which we looked at five transit centers within the Montgomery County, up-county region. This site, we didn't have very good turnout of the ridership surveys, but we did get some information, a good majority were walking to the site and using the buses to get to the, the final destination. We coordinated with Rob and Montgomery Village, and we also coordinated multiple times with Five Mile Capital, who obviously, you know, has purchased the site. So what our study recommended or found? So there are two bus bays today, we need, the current demand is actually 12, that is eight operational bays and four layover bays. So eight are needed to just serve the customers and four are needed to basically serve the bus routes. In 2020, that goes up to 13, and in 2040, it goes up, one more, it's 14. Clearly, we have a big deficiency at this site. So our short-term recommendations for the 2020, our immediate focus is to do what we can within the existing easement and existing right-of-way. The county has an easement for the center at where the shelter itself is, as you can see in blue in this graphic. The proposed recommendation is to add 10 bus bays, it's the max we can get along the road. This requires widening to the median along Lost Knife Road and along Odin Hall Avenue. There will be six bus bays along each road. The goal at this time would be to move the center of the transit center, like the middle of it, to the intersection of Odin Hall and Lost Knife Road. This way, you remove that pedestrian mid-block crossing along Lost Knife and you center them at the intersection so we can cross them along a signal, which it sounded like was part of what Eli was recommending as well. Right now, we propose to have six bus bays along Lost Knife that are parallel bus bays, which means they just go in straight, and six sawtooth bus bays, which go in and into angle. Both are just as safe, it's just a preference for the county. In this recommendation, the buses would have their own spot, designated location, so users would be able to easily find their route. It would, the Ride-On 55 would always be at Bus Bay 3 along Lost Knife Road, and you know, 57 would be at Bus Bay 7 along Odin Hall. So the study team is current, so currently completing 35% design plans on this. Just to show you a couple more graphics, this is what the typical section along Odin Hall Avenue looks like, booking east. So as you can see, the bus bay would be on the left side of the graphic. The existing mall lot is on your left and we would build out basically from the existing right-of-way to the median. So the grass median along Lost Knife, or excuse me, along Odin Hall would be reduced in this area. The typical section along Lost Knife Road would stay very similar to what it is today, except for we widen out where the bus bays are. It's a little skinny right now, so we widen it just to be more comfortable with drivers and the buses. So the median along Lost Knife would get a little reduced as well. So as I mentioned, the short-term recommendation is add the 10 additional bus bays for a total of 12, which meets our current demand. The study team is currently working on the 35% plans for that design. The long-term recommendation would be to develop an off-road transit center with a bus operator facility. This would be in coordination with the mall redevelopment, and we say off-road transit center because once you get up to a certain amount of bus bays, you don't want them on the street anymore, it's not a very safe and operationally good condition, so you want to get them off the street and like, kind of like, if you're familiar with Tacoma Park, they just built a new transit center with a couple of bus bays off-road. So that would be what we want to do and we'd coordinate with the mall to see what the redevelopment is because we're not sure where the center may move. So these improvements, they obviously require approval from you all because you all own city or you all own Odin Hall Avenue. The long-term recommendations also require Lake Forest Mall property owner if the redevelopment, if the transit center were to go on the mall's property. So that is an introduction to our project. We're open for questions.
Thank you very much for the update. Any questions? Would like to start?
I'll start. Thank you for focusing efforts and resources on this. Obviously, it's as you said and as our previous presenter said, there's tremendous demand here and the facilities that exist are woefully insufficient. I mean, it's a good problem that people are using transit, so we need to, you know, do what we can to address it and kind of embrace it. One of the concerns that I've been talking a little bit about with our own staff is, you know, the idea of the long-term solution that you all have proposed makes a lot more sense. And I understand, you know, my interpretation of, of the proposal here in the short term is that it's sort of triage, right? This is the situation, we're desperately in need of more spaces, so this is what we could come up with that would be, you know, relatively quick to do and relatively inexpensive. I guess, but our concern is, and you referenced the Tacoma Park Station as an example, is that in the bigger scheme of things in the county, you know, why aren't we investing in the long-term solution sooner? And I realize we've got a large private property owner here we've got to deal with and who knows if and when they're ever going to redevelop, but that doesn't necessarily prevent us from exploring ways to try to pursue the long-term solution of having an off-road, you know, permanent station somewhere either here or right nearby. And I'm just curious, you know, have you all as planners kind of thought about that as an alternative option?
We have, and actually, I failed to mention, but we are looking into doing a site selection study right now for the long-term solution in conjunction at the same time as when we're doing the short-term design plans.
Okay.
So that is, we're just beginning looking into funding to do the site selection. And that would look at, obviously, the mall property and the surrounding area to determine where is the best site for that long-term transit center and then how to get that property if it's not owned by the county.
Great, thank you. Yeah, because as to your last point, you know, I guess, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, staff or my colleagues up here, but I think, you know, the city would be amenable to, to working with the county, of course, with some of our own resources potentially. I know we've got the, the several million dollars of funding that's dedicated for the transportation projects, right, Rob?
The Transportation Impact Tax Fund.
The Impact Tax Fund, so that's got what, 14, 15 million dollars in it right now? And, you know, I don't have any authority to allocate that money myself here, sitting here, but I, you know, I think having-
I just wanted to make clear that's not a commitment.
No, it's not. That's what I'm trying to say, that's what I'm trying to say, but-
I see the pen starting to run.
My point is, it's worth having a conversation if we want to try to get to the longer-term solution sooner. So I, I personally, just speaking for myself, think that it's worth having that conversation. And I'm looking forward to the placement study results so that we can maybe have that conversation. I do think ideally, it would be nice if we could move forward with the longer-term solution on this site with this private property owner, but I, I don't want us to get stuck waiting too long. That's, that's my view, so.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up because I really do favor the long-term solution instead of another Band-Aid, which is, even if we have 12 bays, it's still basically a Band-Aid because they're still on the road instead of off, off the road. I think it's not, you know, it's a, it's a big bus stop, it's not really a transit center as it is with a nice, large shelter, but no other facilities or amenity. Ideally, you'd like to see some other development that would be above all of this and you'd have the bus bays, you know, off-road and underneath whatever facility could be built there. So we've seen that kind of thing in different, different parts of the country, probably even in, you know, different locations here in Montgomery County. So I, I'd like to see a longer-term plan. We certainly need to address the issues here and I think we can do that right away. I'm surprised that there isn't a proposal for off-road at this point, even as a, as kind of a temporary solution, a short-term solution, because you do have a pretty significant chunk of property here in which that might be possible. I guess that would be negotiations with the property owner, but still, that might be better than nothing. So, or at least to approach that in the short term. And then, you know, that could also give the, the property owner some ideas about redevelopment as well. I think that there's advantages for, for this particular owner to look at including a transit center in their redevelopment plans as well. So, you know, it's, it's a, it's an important feature for residents of the area, not just the city, but the, you know, the, the next mile radius, so, but yeah, I like that idea of a longer-term solution. But I think going forward, we certainly need to, to do something about the other situation. So.
I mean, from, just looking at this area and what's, what's on the horizon, not only in our city but neighboring us, it's a lot of redevelopment going, that is potentially going on in this area. You know, we also can't forget the, the other county priority BRT, which will come pretty close to this area. So if we're anticipating eight bays needed to meet current demand, perhaps you might even be cutting it short on, by saying 12 to 13 in, in the next few decades, because there's the potential for a lot of growth. And if the county's going to make it a priority to be forcing people out of their one-person vehicles and onto alternate transportation, there's a lot of stuff on the horizon. But, you know, again, a lot of that's conditional, a lot of that's up in the air, so I, I like the plan of focusing on meeting immediate needs, but also keeping the eye on the horizon of what's to come. So great, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this matter? Please, come on up, Joe.
Joe Allen, 641 B Main Street. Again, just like the last proposal, this is a great next step, look at what we could envision for engaging folks in transportation alternatives. And although Rob says force people out of one, you know, person cars, it's really more about giving people options. I use different options every day, you know, from biking to Mark to Metro, and transit center is a great option for many folks in that area. It is not necessarily very attractive right now, it's just a large bus stop. I lived in San Antonio where transit centers were the function of their transportation network all throughout their loop and is an impressive way to get around and transfer between places. You would be inside in the middle of summer or in the middle of winter, or the summer at that point, you know, for the air conditioning and whatnot, but really encouraging folks to have a place to transfer and enjoy their transfer and not just stand out in the middle of the street. I think it is encouraging to look at coordination with the BRT. It's one of my big concerns between the CCT, the 355, and this, there is really no good connection between SHA's plans and these local plans. There's constant discussion, but a lot of finger pointing about how that's going to happen. Somebody needs to sit down with all of these riders and figure out, so I don't have to walk a half a block or block to make that connection. It just defeats the purpose of actually making the connection. I think safety is a big concern at the Lake Forest and making sure any transit center option doesn't reproduce the Bethesda mistake of having a darkened area, it would not work in the Lake Forest area. I think redevelopment's a great way to match what we would do in that region. And even in the short term, I think the street grid on that side of the mall actually could come to fruition sooner if they could bring in some type of economic development plan. And looking at the cost of the bikeway network, it was something like $2.6 million. That should come as a part of the street grid redesign and if you're already investing money in rebuilding the transit center, even in the short term, it seems such a waste of money to build some additional bus bays, reconfigure- short term, it seems such a waste of money to build some additional bus bays, reconfigure curbs and drainage and all the environmental studies you're going to have to do, encourage, you know, to address the short-term needs, but it really seems like such a loss to spend money when the street grid should move forward. And if we could push to move that forward in any way possible with the city, I think that should be encouraged. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers tonight? Okay, not seeing any. Rob, what's the next step?
We'll continue to work with our partners and as you mentioned, you know, be very interested in the site selection study and then hopefully, you know, if they begin to pivot and think long-term, obviously, as we mentioned, you know, we seem, it sounds as if from council, we're amenable to potentially becoming a greater stakeholder in this longer-term vision for the transit center and hopefully maybe helping the site selection.
You know, we haven't heard from Five Mile in some time about their plans for Lake Forest, but when they were here before, they were certainly aware of the transit center and it seemed like they, from what they said at the time, that they would have been amenable to discussions for including it, as Mike said, in their, in their long-term plan. Now, who knows if that's still the case, but, you know, I hope that they come back to the table soon and can work with everybody here to perhaps even foster a longer-term solution coming earlier. Rob, what do you-
I can pass along, I spoke to their local legal counsel today about the study and they found nothing, you know, they gave them heartache, they understand the situation. But again, as you just mentioned, you know, they are still basically trying to figure out what their position is, you know, essentially their 2020 and their 2040 plan.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you all for the presentation and we look forward to the next steps and what we come up with. Do we have any, Tony, anything further?
No.
Okay. Well, that said, the next regular meeting of the mayor and council, as I look it up on my calendar, is the 15th, next Monday, 7:30 PM right here. Until then, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.